Do you have, depending on how long it goes, if you have time after you want to talk about the lease for a minute, we can. The lease, watch card?
Oh, yeah.
Called to order at 6:33 PM. Discussion regarding counter response to COVID-19. Only update that I'm aware of is one, one new case.
Correct.
In the last week, so still very low numbers, which is great. Next topic of business, we have Chief Holtz with us here tonight, is review of patrol officer search process and appointment recommendation, and discussion regarding future staffing plans. Welcome, sir.
Thank you.
Probably. I guess we can come at it from either side, and Chief, I know you and myself and Brian have spoke about some of the staffing pieces, and so I don't know if it makes more sense from, to you to start with talking about staffing plans as opposed to appointment, or which way you want to approach that, because one may support the other differently.
Yes, sure. So first of all, thanks for scheduling a special meeting for tonight. We are faced with some serious concerns as far as the scheduling goes and staffing goes. And so I'd like to just present to you guys that I still, although I think we need to maintain six officers, it's been difficult to maintain six. And so to help alleviate some of that, what I'd like to try to do is put out an advertisement to bring back part-time and see what we can get for candidate pools, you know, to have, you know, maybe six full-time officers and then an additional five part-time officers. So that's one thing that I would like to, to address, you know, is, is to bring back part-time and what that would look like.
Okay. And then, as most of the board is probably aware, we obviously had a vacancy, which is what this search process recommendation is coming from tonight, and then.
Yeah, we just found out about another vacancy.
Right, and then we have another officer who has tendered their resignation at full-time.
Correct, and then we're still looking at, most likely, at the end of April is losing a third to, to another agency, so.
Right, and I believe the, the most recent resignation is effective, is that a week from today?
It's this coming Sunday, the 27th. The officer has indicated that he would like to stay on with us part-time.
Okay.
And, and I would really ask the board to, to consider that because, you know, he already works for us. He already has the uniforms, you know, radio key, everything. So I would, I would ask that, that we would keep him on part-time, and he has indicated that he would like to stay on part-time. I think that, that he would be able to, to fill in some gaps. I hate to see him leave, but.
Of course, agreed. Maybe just as a pause there, and I know, you know, Scott, during some time when we had, you know, we're going through the chief's search process, you weren't on the board at that, you know, that period there, but obviously we were short-staffed then too. Bill and I, you know, spoke with you as acting chief at the time, multiple times about plans and methods to, to combat that. And I know at the time, I think you were a proponent for, and I was supportive of, part-time if you felt it made sense, and you know, at the time you didn't, so I guess I just look back to us, do we have any concerns with augmenting the staffing plan on the force with part-time?
I, I don't have concerns with part-time, I just want to make sure, just for clarification, part-time status still requires that they attend the Bridge Academy and complete that, correct?
That's correct, Scott.
Just wanted to make sure.
Yep, they, so anybody A through H right now has until the end of June. If they don't go to the Bridge, then they are decertified. If they do, then they can maintain, and then I through.
Whatever they.
I don't know what the next number is, S or R or S, would be June of 2023, and then the remaining would be June of 2024. So if we kept this particular officer that we, that recently gave his resignation, we would have him at least until June of 2024, but he's also indicated that he does, does want to pursue the Bridge.
That's going to be the second part that I wanted to talk through with all of us, is Academy, right, and Bridge and all that, because we, we've talked a little bit before and said, you know, full-time Academy was important, but at least in discussions, and I think, you know, Chief brings up really good points and concern, I have some concerns about if we're requiring that. Does that make this even more challenging? It's already going to be a challenging enough period for the next three years, I think, in general, two and a half years, but. So we can, I mean, we can go into that right away if you want, it was a good question.
No, I, I just think, you know, Chief and I have talked about it, I said it on a different meeting with him about something else, and it came up in conversation about the difficulties of finding staff and getting them through. And I know I was an advocate for saying, all, all staff members, all full-time staff members should be going through the Full-Time Academy. That was at a meeting, you know, a month and a half ago. And since then, realizing the difficulty of keeping, and if Post is going to acknowledge the Bridge Academy along with their part-time Academy that they've already completed and have the certificate from, I see no reason not to do that, not to offer that as, you know, the same opportunity to, to retain staff. We have some decent staff that can stay here, they're, they're hardworking, and I have no reason to say that we shouldn't utilize that.
Yeah, I, I agree. You know, my gut feeling is, is that, that we would, we would like to see people who have attended the Full Academy as opposed to the Bridge, but we're not going to exclude anyone because all they have is the Bridge. If we have the opportunity to, to then send someone to a Full Academy and they're willing to go, and, and that's our goal and our wish, I, I think we should do that. But in the meantime, if Bridge qualifies as being equivalent to that, then we can accept that. I think we should accept it as, as it is.
And just to piggyback on that, this is a finite amount of time. Fast forward three years from now, there is no more Bridge. You know, after June of 2024, anybody who wants to get into law enforcement will be looking at a full-time Academy. Or any variation thereof that, you know, Post deems appropriate at that point, so.
And to that point, Mr. Basharash, at that point, we would probably be coming to the board, you know, whoever would be sitting here in, in four years, three years, saying, we have an officer that has no training potentially, and we have to give them all the training. You know, we're going to be basically taking somebody who knows nothing about police work, and, and if we're not able to, to, to take from another community or something like that, so, you know, we're going to be looked at like a, you know, like a Springfield or a Holyoke where they can say, yeah, we'll take these people on and send them to the Academy, and then they flush them out of the Academy or whatever, you know, we'll be in that situation.
Yeah, I mean, every department will be.
Potentially, every, every department will be.
It's either someone who's already been through this, someone who's already got full-time, or someone who's already been certified through a Bridge process, it's going to be the pool, right? Or it's a zero experience or full-time or equivalent certifications, right? I mean, that's all we're going to have.
Yeah.
There is currently, I believe, a pilot program for still a full-time Academy at a part-time process, you know, say, somebody that works a, a full-time job can still go nights and weekends, but now you're asking a six-month Academy, that's probably going to be looking at nine months to a year long, so. Somebody's really going to have to dedicate a lot of their time. And I think that they have that going on right now, it's, it's the only one in this, there's one going on in the state, and I don't know how successful it has looked at this point, but.
Well, yeah, stretching that out for someone who wants to change careers and allow them to balance the two for.
Yeah, you take electrician that's looking to become a police officer, now he's going to have to spend the next nine months to a year at a, at a part-time Academy. I mean, it is a possibility, but.
Well, are you saying a full-time Academy that's done on a part?
Part-time.
On a part-time basis, like it's not five days a week for six months, it's.
Nights and weekends.
Spent out quite a bit, yeah, okay.
To get that same amount of hours and 700 something hours.
It's a lot of time.
But that's, that's a problem in a few years.
Yeah, well, and I think, I, I would just say, I agree with both of you, and I, I think we, we all agreed and felt that full-time was important, full-time Academy was important. However, the current situation in Massachusetts isn't going to make that very conducive. I just had the concern of if we, if we say that's, that's required, the other potential is we have officers who can work at another community and go through Bridge, which is a different burden for them, right, financially and time and all of that, to then attain full-time status. Are we, is that it, are we looked at as, as that is a negative for a potential candidate to have, to come here and do that? So does that affect our hiring, you know, potential as well? Because the, the path to fully certified is more difficult potentially. In the next three, three years, yeah, yeah.
Three to five years, yes.
And after 2024, you know, June, officers who have bridged and been certified, if we then still say you have to, we're still, as you said, it's beyond three years, we're still potentially adding a burden that they may not want to take on. That being said, I'll add one thing. I just wanted to agree with you, though, that as strategic opportunity arises, if we work with an officer and they're interested in, in doing that as well, and, you know, we want to support that and put them through anyway, I absolutely think we should try to. But we could be in a position where in a few months, we have three officers who need to go through it, and there's no, I mean, there's no way I feel that we could sustain and put them all through at the same time, nor do I think we should avoid bridging just because. So I think maybe doing that and evaluating on a, maybe on an annual basis or on a basis of where we're at with the staff, and, you know, can we strategically move that goal forward? Anyway, sorry, go ahead, Bill, I just wanted to say, I do agree with the idea of still being an important thing, if we can, we should.
I kind of lost, lost my thought.
I'm sorry.
But, no, no, that's, that's fine. I, I think what I was going to say is, is that a Full Academy today, if you have a Full Police Academy as, as we know it, you can generally go into other communities and to other states and may not have to go through Academy. That Academy is so strong and, and the training is so well-accepted, we don't know that Bridge is, is ever going to be accepted that way. And the fact, in fact, the only place it may be accepted with any reliability is in Massachusetts. Beyond the borders of Massachusetts, it's probably not going to be accepted anywhere in, in the country, so. If future officers who have just taken Bridge, as long as they are willing to just live in one, one locale, then they may be fine. But if they attempt to try to bridge out beyond that, they're going to be faced with going through a Police Academy, a Full Police Academy.
And, and, you know, I mean, I think this is all great talk. The reality of it is too, is that, I mean, the state still has the say, right? Like, let's not forget, Post C still has the final say at the end. I mean, we, we could all sit here tonight and say that this looks like a great idea, and I think it does, or I wouldn't be presenting it. But Post C still could come in, it hasn't been challenged yet because nobody has gone through this process. We're just now getting people through the First Bridge Academy, right? So it'll be interesting when Post starts to get these requests for these permanent exemptions. What are they going to say? They may say no, so we may have to do the Full-Time Academy anyways. Nobody knows yet. But it, but, but it does clearly say in here that if you have all these requirements to include the Post Academy, I mean, the Bridge Academy, and you're being moved from a temporary to a permanent, that you can request a waiver, so.
So a, just so I'm clear, currently Bridge is, as defined, is to get a part-time certified officer to be able to continue to work part-time? I mean, is that as we understand it, but they can appeal to be certified full-time or equivalent?
From my, what, from my understanding, Chairman, is, is that they said, Massachusetts has said, we want all of our officers to have the same standard of training. All these officers that had all this part-time training and all this time on the job now have to go to an additional amount of training to make them all equally trained officers. So if you're saying they're all equally trained, they're no longer part-time. They're now considered able to be full-time employees, if that was your goal.
It sounds, equivalent means equivalent, right? But, but they have the say, right?
They do have, they could say, no, that's not what the intention was.
Right.
But that's not what, that's, I mean, I have this, this whole packet here from, from MPTC saying what the Bridge is, and, and it clearly does have a section in here, eligibility requirements for municipal reserve officers to request a possible MPTC exemption for Full-Time Academy. So they've got it written right in their rules and regulations, you know? That was adopted August 18th, 2021, that that is a possibility potentially there.
So, so let me ask you this, have we seen the, the, the training blocks and the hours that the Bridge is putting forward for these officers?
It's all in here.
And compared it with, with the, with the Full Academy?
Yeah.
Do they match up?
It, it's still shy, like an hour, 100 hours or something like that, so it doesn't, it doesn't still equal up, equal up to the, the total. And that was an issue that had been brought up in the chief's meetings, like saying, okay, well, you're making them do this, but it's still not the 700-plus hours that we do, it's like 600-something. But they definitely do go through a lot more training. But I, I'd be more than happy to, to email all of you guys this, so you can see what the, what the, the training.
So primarily, this is for, this Bridge is for part-time Academy, or part-time officers?
Is so part-time officers can continue to be police officers, and they are considered full-time officers? Equivalent to full-time officers.
Full-Time Academy trained.
Full, yeah.
Full-Time Academy trained, so I mean, I've spoken with several officers from neighboring communities, you know, through professional engagements, and their departments are saying, if you're going, it doesn't mean that you're coming back to us as a full-time officer. It's to remain as a part-time officer. They're not changing their staffing plan just because Post C said, you need to attend this training. The, the training is to be able to remain.
But my argument to that, Mr. Basharash, would be is that, let's say we were in that situation where we had part-time officers. Say we have a staff of six full-time officers, we don't have a vacancy. Okay, yes, we will send you to the Bridge Academy, but you are not, just because you go to the Bridge Academy, doesn't mean Irving's going to create a full-time slot for you, but I can guarantee these departments, they're going to lose somebody, and they're going to be like, oh, we got so-and-so sitting here on the site.
Sure.
You know? That's going to happen. They're not going to then create a position for them, but they will, they will take advantage of that opportunity. I would be willing to bet, I mean, it's, it, times are tough, you know? I mean, we just went through an application process and we got, I think, 14 applicants, and one of them had the Full-Time Academy, two of them had the Part-Time Academy, and that was it, so.
But I think the pool, I think to your point, though, the pool is shrunk, is shrinking before Post, just, you know, the profession in general.
Yeah, I would agree, I would agree.
With the, the political climate and other things, I, I think it's looked at differently, unfortunately, than it used to be in some cases, and less people are moving in that direction, and then add all these changes with Post C, and I think some who are part-time today may not continue come whenever their alphabet, you know, lands. So that pool gets smaller and smaller, more and more. They're going to be leveraged as full-time equivalent if, you know, full-time officers with, you know, equivalent training if the state allows, because there's going to be a demand.
Right, and, and I, and I, and I agree with the three of you, that I, I still stand on the Full-Time Academy. I believe, you know, I, I know we just had an officer who was a Marine veteran, who had been doing the job for about a year and a half as a part-time officer, went to the Full-Time Academy, and he still said, I got something from the Full-Time Academy. So, you know, even I would encourage all of our officers still to go to the Full-Time Academy, but it's, it comes down to financial, I mean, right now, if it, if it goes down to just three of us and we lose one of him to the Full-Time Academy, now it's down to just two of us. I mean, that, that's impossible, it's, it's just virtually impossible, you know?
Well, level of service will be nowhere near where we all want it to be. Or our residents expect it.
If you go down to two offices, what, what, what would be your plan? I mean.
Honestly, I submitted, I submitted a schedule to, to Chairman, you know, one, he's the chairman, two, he's my liaison, just so he had an idea of what the schedule would look like, and it would look like Rob Holtz working doubles on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and the other guy working doubles on Friday, Saturday, Sunday, I mean. And that's just, that's not realistic.
That's not realistic, yeah.
And if we do, if you guys do agree to, to bring in some part-time, that can alleviate and fill in some of those holes. But let's be honest, too, I mean, I, I'm not naive enough to say, you know, oh, part-timers are going to solve our problems, because part-timers will give you the world, oh, yeah, I'll give you the world, and then, okay, well, you know, I need you to work a Friday night, oh, a Friday night, geez. That's the reality of it.
They're part-time and available when they're available, and that's going to be the challenge, for sure.
That, that, right, that's the challenge, so.
Bill, if I had to speculate, I mean, and, and obviously it'd be chief's strategy, but, I mean, if you have two people who are going to be tucking, you know, 60 to 80 hours of coverage a week, you know, half the week, best case, right?
And, and I don't want to.
And that's even with some overtime, right? So I mean, I just, it's not going to be pretty.
And I can't put that pressure on the state police to start covering, you know, I mean, they're already helping us out on the overnights, you know, here and there, and I, we just can't ask them to work, you know, three to 11 shifts, 11 to 7 shifts for us.
I agree, but we can't burn out two officers while we try to bring people in.
No, that's why, that's why I'm saying I think that we need to at least look at Bridge, see if that is an option. You know, I think it's financially a smart decision, at least for, for the foreseeable future. I think that it gets officers still being able to work and, and bring in some part-time, which can help fill in some gaps. I just, you know, we got to try something.
So, so let me throw a monkey wrench into this whole thing, and should we, should we be having a discussion about raising the entrance pay for our officers coming in?
Yes, I, I think, I, I think we should, yes. They're union, and I, and I know that that's.
That's going to raise it some, but it's not going to maybe put us where we, where we need to be.
I mean, we're, the reality of it is, is we're losing officers, we're losing, I, I, I see three problems. Pay, schedule, and advancement opportunities. I, I do think that if you fix pay, you, you help fix the schedule, so now we're not always creating these gaps. You'll still have advancement options, and listen, you'll never be like the state police. The state police, you know, nobody in the state is the state police, you know? You'll still lose your officers to the state police, but to, to your point, Bill, yes, I, I, I mean, I, like $22 an hour starting, you know, sounded good several years ago, few years ago. Now you can, 21, go work at McDonald's, you can go work at Target at 24. That's the reality, that's the reality of it.
I mean, I don't know, Scott can verify this, but I don't think, our lowest grade teachers don't probably make more than $22 an hour.
Yeah, I'd have to double-check the table, but I'm, it would be, they'd be on the low end.
I mean, I know part-time officers, and I just had this conversation with, with Brian earlier today, part-time officers are making 20, 21, you know? You can go work in Sunderland, I just talked with the, the Chutesbury Chief, and they're paying their part-time officers 21 and some change. Deerfield's 20, 21 and some change.
To be fair, though, Bill, most teachers that are coming in also come in with a minimum of a bachelor's. Most have master's degrees. It's a different, it's a whole different field, so to compare the two starting wages was, isn't really.
Yeah, yeah, no, I, I know.
And I hear, and I hear you, Mr. Basharash, but we're also asking our officers to work nights, weekends, holidays, carry guns.
They come with different concerns, but just to say that the starting wage, you know, it, it's different.
Right.
Yeah, no, I didn't say that, that probably wasn't a fair analogy, but I was just trying to get, trying to show apples and oranges in a fair way, but.
It's worth having a discussion about.
So, would you have a recommendation for a starting salary range?
30?
30?
I'm kidding.
I'm kidding. That's the thing, right, where it's, it's difficult for me to say because they have, they have unionized. I mean, I think that that's, that's something that, that they need to, to take on, but to your initial question, 22 is, is low to me. What is fair, I think that that's for, for them to decide with, with you guys.
Just while we were talking, and it's, it's a year old, you know, because it's an FY '20 schedule, but I just pulled up the FERCOG, you know, municipal wage salary survey for FY '20, so it's about a year on a date, but most of the towns that are smaller, you know, not Montague, Greenfield, Deerfield, let's say, excluded, are at 20-something or less.
So, so, um, let me throw a monkey wrench into this whole thing and should we, should we be having a discussion about raising the entrance pay for, um, our officers coming in?
Yes, I, I think, I, I, I think we should, yes. They're a union and I, and I know that that's.
That's going to raise it some, but it's not going to, um, maybe put us where we, where we need to be.
I mean, we're, I, I, the reality of it is, is we're losing officers, we're losing, I, 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 I see three problems. Pay, schedule, and advancement opportunities. I, I do think that if you fix pay, you, you help fix the schedule. So now we're not always creating these gaps. You'll still have advancement options and listen, you'll never be like the state police, the state police, you know, nobody in the state is the state police, you know? You'll still lose your, your, your officers to the state police, but to, to your point, Bill, yes, I, I, I mean, I, I, $22 an hour starting, you, you know, sounded good several years ago, few years ago. Now you can 21, go work at McDonald's, you can go work at Target at 24. That, that's the reality. That's the reality of it.
I mean, I don't know, Scott can verify this, but I don't think, uh, our lowest grade teachers don't probably make more than $22 an hour.
Yeah, I'd have to double check the table, but, um, it would be, uh, they'd be on the low end.
I mean, I know part-time officers, and I just had this conversation with, with Brian earlier today, part-time officers are making 20, 21, you know? You can go work in Sunderland. I just talked with the, the Chutesbury Chief and they're paying their part-time officers 21 and some change. Deerfield's 20, 21 and some change.
To be fair though, Bill, most teachers that are coming in also come in with a minimum of a bachelor's. Most have master's degrees. It's a different, it's a whole different field. So to compare the two starting wages was, isn't really.
Yeah, yeah. No, I, I know.
And I hear, and I hear you, Mr. Basserash, but we're also asking our officers to work nights, weekends, holidays, carry guns.
They come with different, uh, concerns, but just to say that the starting wage, um, you know, it, it's different.
Right.
Yeah. No, I didn't say that. That probably wasn't a fair analogy, but, um, I was just trying to get, trying to show apples and oranges and, um, in a fair way, but.
It's, it's worth having a discussion about.
So, uh, would you have a recommendation for a starting salary range?
30?
30?
I'm kidding.
Yeah, I was going to say that.
I'm kidding. Yeah, right. That's the thing, right? Where it's, it's difficult for me to say because they have, they have unionized. I mean, I think that that's, that's something that, that they need to, to, to take on, but to your initial question, 22 is, is low to me. But what is fair? I think that that's for, for them to decide with, with you guys.
Just while we were talking and it's, it's a year old, you know, because it's an FY20 schedule, but I just pulled up the FERCOG. You know, municipal wage salary survey for FY20, so it's about a year on a date, but, um, most of the towns that are smaller, um, you know, not Montague, Greenfield, Deerfield, let's say excluded, um, are at 20 something or less, even 18, 19 for full-time. There's very few that are in the, that are more than 20 something. Um, there's a couple 21s to start, you know, starting rate, right? I think Northfield's 21 and change. That was a year ago, so now maybe it's 22, you know, so, so, but, but just in terms of where are we? I mean, I think we're, it, on a quick glance, you know, I, I think where we are today is likely on par with most towns or higher. Like with the exception of the larger communities that are, that are higher. But I, I know we're talking about this next Monday a little bit, you know, but do we need to make some overall change to our schedule? And I'll just plan something you said, Scott, you know, if we're looking to be in the top five, give or take, you know, maybe just under the large communities that we really can't compete with. It's not realistic, then maybe we aren't quite there. I don't think we're at the bottom, but we're probably more middle. So, and that's just county, obviously. What we're competing with is a bigger range than that in, in this profession. I'm sure they will go further, for the right reasons, as we've seen both come here and leave here, so.
I would like to stop seeing people leave though. I really would. I know that that was a, I had that goal when I first took over and I just, sometimes I just find myself beating my head against the wall. It's just, it's crazy, you know? It's frustrating.
Doesn't make any easier, but in my time here and my time even with the Finance Committee total, I've watched us try different strategies and continue to see it ebb and flow, but, but always have that turnover. With Chief Blair and I, not that he hasn't tried, the town hasn't tried, that you're not trying, but.
No, I know.
It's probably only gotten harder.
Yeah.
I think. Too. Yeah. I mean, we know in some cases they're leaving for non-law enforcement potential because they pay better, right?
Yeah, we just lost a guy back to the private sector.
Right. So that's, that's a battle. It's going to be hard to ever win that one.
Well, one of the other things, um, I, the Chief and I had talked about was, was, um, um, trying to, um, find candidates who have little or no experience and, and homegrowing them into the process of, of, of becoming, um, police officers. Who have that desire to want to go into that field and to, um, um, that, that maybe if, if you started with them like, like in.
Like an auxiliary?
Like an auxiliary type situation, um, in, in the end, you'd get a better trained, maybe get a better trained officer. And, and someone who is willing to give more of a commitment to the community.
Yeah, we actually had a couple applicants that kind of fit into that category and, and obviously Selectman Benberry was on the, the hiring process. And it was like, ah, they look, they're good, they're local. I'm, I'm sure that, you know, I talk with them on the phone and they're very respectful and stuff. And you're like, ah, they just didn't have any training, you know? Um, but they have a desire to become a police officer. And, and I, and I kind of look at them and I'm like, you know, maybe you can bring them in and foster them and, and develop them and, you know? It, it wouldn't be a paid position. They, you know, obviously they would understand that it wouldn't be that, but it would be an auxiliary program to expose them to, to law enforcement. What is it that we deal with? Um, and they may decide, wow, I don't want that and leave, which then you've lost nothing or maybe, and then that, that pilot program, maybe they would be interested in doing a pilot program. You know, where they would be willing to commit their time too. So it is something that, that would be. Yeah, I, I know that they used to do that like a lot. I think it was like the Citizen Police Academy. It was kind of like people that were interested in law enforcement and I know people that went to the Citizen Police Academy and then turned around and actually pursued part-time work. So it might, it might be an opportunity to, to get somebody that would be rooted deeper in, in the commitment, you know?
Our odds might be better with the dedicated or the wanting to stay here.
Because I think, you know, a lot of these bigger cities and stuff, bigger towns and bigger cities, they have, they have people in their community that's interested in it. You know, unfortunately Irving doesn't have a high school, you know, take even something like a high school, you know, Turner's, where the football coach might be also on the police department. And, and, and he's talking to his, those, those football players and now they're like, oh, I want to become a cop. And they're like, I'll, I'll get my start in Montague. You know, Irving doesn't have that. We don't have that, that, that outreach to our community to, 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 to get people. One, it's difficult nowadays anyways, but two, we just don't have that, that resource to, so. It, it's definitely worth, I think, you know, looking into at some point. But I think initially if we could just bring some part-time on and, and look at, you know, if we can use the Bridge as, as a full-time academy, I think we should do it.
I think the other ideas are great. Anything we can do to try to encourage more engagement, more interest and more dedication to, you know, being here and such. Uh, also, I know there's no way that we are in a position to be ready to do that with multiple officers. But if, if we're not that many years from either there's someone available who's already trained or you're starting from nothing, right? And I don't mean that as, as a character reference, but a experience and, and training, they will have none. Do we want to consider maybe doing that now? If, if in the next, and I'm, and I'm thinking maybe ahead, right? We need to go back out and, and recruit again because we don't have even what we need today. So as we're doing that, is the board interested in, if, if that's your recommendation through that process, Chief and the screening committee to potentially consider it, uh, you know, a green recruit that we start out, maybe we do some auxiliary or some sort of, you know?
Down the line.
Whenever you, that's what I'm saying. Like, I don't know when, you know, when, when does that make sense to start that process? And then to potentially be sponsoring someone through the academy from, from the start.
Yeah, yeah.
And so our, our recruitment is to have an officer hopefully in six to nine months, not, you know, not right away.
Right.
Correct.
Whereas we have generally recruited to have an officer today that at some point we will. Exactly. That at some point we will potentially, um, have a gap for six months while they're at the academy, knowing, but not, but not knowing how that's going to play out, right? So, I just. That reality is not far away. So should we consider it sooner? I guess is all I'm saying. If, as we're going through recruiting, I, you know, we can't do that with three people and three vacancies, but should we or could we do that with one? Or do that with someone to sponsor them to potentially be a part-time officer even? And then maybe they won't be full-time right away.
Yeah, I think going forward.
On the bench, right?
I think going forward, that'll be the plan, but for now we have to fill a void.
Absolutely.
For the immediate need of, A, filling the void and then having the, uh, you know, staffing plan that will allow us to do that. Whether, you know, and that's the, going back to the part-time. So I think tackling that first, we have the initiatives of how to, how to go long-range. We can, we can tackle those in, in weeks to, weeks and months to come about the long-range plan of.
Sure.
You know, uh, getting somebody fresh that we know, we're back to a, at least a staffing capacity that allows them to function and take a day off.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Without burnout. Um, and, uh, and then we can look at, how do we get, how do we get staff in here, given the confines of Post and, and, you know, Bridge Academy, full-time academy? And we may get candidates right out of, you know, fresh with no training that we need to work through, so.
I was only asking it now, not because they solve the today gap.
The future.
But it could be a year, even if we took someone from a pool today that we felt was worth investing in before they'd even be able to contribute. So by the time the academy rolled around availability, all of that, so not that it solves today's problem, but if we have a pool of candidates and there are ones in there that meet that criteria, should we just be putting them in the pile that says, we're not interested right now? Or should we be putting them in a pile that says, let's see if there's somebody to target for a different path today? Again, that's my question, I guess.
Yeah, I would say, I was looking, when I say a few weeks, it's that pool. So yes.
Oh, okay. All right, all right. I'm sorry.
Yes, I'm thinking.
I'm thinking you meant after we kind of got past our current challenge, not simultaneously. Okay.
Yeah, I'm thinking so, we get past, you know, we're looking to hire somebody, uh, that has the training that we can turnkey start them. If they have to attend the Bridge, if they haven't, if they're not in the first group and they won't have it by June, they plan on attending it when their name, you know, falls in line. And we have them, we accept that, it's, uh, you know, post-certified, they're full-time equivalent, they stay on with us simultaneously. We still have other gaps we need to fill. If we can get a candidate that is, comes in trained and wants to work in Irving and we like them, it's a good fit, hire them, they start. If we have a really good candidate that we think is somebody that we want to sponsor to go to the academy, I don't think we just cast aside the application. I think we hold it and we look at it and we say, you know, we have to plan for the long-term and that, that opens up our pool to more people.
Right, right.
I would agree.
Okay.
You have a lot to do, Chief. I mean, just, just sitting here, banding this, this whole conversation about is a lot, is, you know, and, um.
It's about 2% of his actual duties that we ask him to do.
It's going to take him about 80% of his time right now.
We're here, you have our support.
I, I know that.
Fully have our support and, um, and we're in the same boat and we're working toward the same goal.
And I have a good sergeant. He, he actually is pretty, pretty darn good. I mean, he, he knows too, and he knows that he's, you know, I, if I ask, if I, all those guys are good. They really are. You ask them to work, they all work. But my sergeant, he's, he tries to alleviate as much pressure and, and stress as possible. So, he's trying. We have, we have a good group. It's just, just when we think we have a great group, a couple, it's like, ah.
Well, the history is, is we're not going to totally alleviate that?
Nah, I know, I know.
I mean, that's always going to be with us. It's, it's going to be part of the job.
Yep. No, I know.
We just need to do the best we can.
It's when we're losing three at a time. It's just, it's, you know, you lose one here and there, it is what it is, but you still don't ever want to lose anybody.
Right.
Maybe if we can build a part-time bench that's committed and interested, maybe as opportunities come up, some of them are still looking and that's, helps us too. To that point, it's great that Sergeant does that, but none of you can get burnt out, right? We have to, and I'll just say to your comment about state police, I understand that that's a burden that they're not prepared to take on, but that doesn't mean we burn ourselves out either. So it hopefully won't come to that, but if it does, we have to do what we have to do. And balance all of it, which is not easy.
I mean, because, yeah, I mean, the reality of it is too, is even if we hire somebody, say, say you guys accept my recommendation tonight, you know, for, for the two candidates that I'd like to recommend, you're still looking at psychological, uh, physical and training. I mean, they, they may come to us with training, but that doesn't mean that they know Irving, you know? So I mean, you're still looking at, I mean, the last physical was, I think I had just asked one of the guys how long it took to get a physical and it was about a month to even get scheduled for a physical. So, I mean, even if you took my recommendations tonight, I mean, what's May 21st, we're still looking at maybe April 21st, getting a physical. So, I mean, we're looking at maybe May 1st for possibly a start date, you know? And that's for them to just start training.
Right, I was going to say, they're just going to be training.
You know?
Right.
So.
Well, I'm in favor of, of, um, part-time, using, uh, part-time officers to facilitate, um, what we're doing here, so.
Excellent. Thank you.
Just to summarize a couple of things, just a couple of key different things. So we support Chief's recommendation of adding part-time back to the mix as appropriate. We support bridging officers as needed right now and postponing as Chief sees fit right now, um, sending officers to the full-time academy. Until we're at a place where that's able and we can have a conversation about how we do that strategically. We're interested in, as we do future screenings, looking for a candidate that might be someone we want to sponsor who has no experience to potentially sponsor as a, as an academy candidate in addition to filling our ranks. Was that?
Yep.
And those were kind of maybe the key, the key future staffing plan items, right? Did I miss any that you wanted us to consider?
No, sir.
Okay. So kind of the, the short, and I say short, meaning the now to three-year kind of, what are we doing to?
Yeah.
Uh, that, just to add to that, Chairman, and this might come up as we, as my recommendations are, are presented, but, um, with the, with the Bridge, uh, we're looking at 38 hours max week for the employees.
Those who are part-time certified and need a, need the Bridge?
Need the Bridge or need to go, need to go to the full-time academy. We're not technically hiring them as, it's not going to be my recommendation to hire them as a full-time employee. It's going to be recommended to hire them as a part-time employee up to 30, with a scheduled 38 hours. So that they get their benefits and things like that.
And that's up until completion of Bridge?
Completion until they are.
Certified.
Eligible for the exemption.
Okay.
Because somebody might.
They have to apply for and, and, yeah.
Somebody might complete the Bridge, but be short on the hours that are required for them to work.
Okay. Do they have to get the exemption before they can be full-time or just have to have met all the criteria?
They have to get all the criterias and then we have to request the exemption. And then, then we'll get the blessing, yes, you can move them from a part-time position to now a full-time position. Or they may say, no, they still need to go to the full-time academy. In the end, I mean, we, we still gained a couple of years, potentially, you know?
But to your point, it's certified.
Certified.
Certified as, as.
So that, that, that might, so to the second part of your, your, your question, but the, it would be my recommendation that they would work on a limited, no more than 38 hours scheduled work weeks.
And that's, and that's the only way they can work unless we applied for a waiver today, correct?
Apply for a waiver, but then you're acknowledging that it's a full-time employee that needs to go to a full-time academy.
Right.
If that makes sense.
It does.
It does.
I'm sorry. I'm trying to learn this process myself. It's.
They're paving the road as they're driving on it, so, uh, for any of us to understand it, it's, it's difficult.
Well, I can't even understand it at times. I.
No, I don't mean you. I mean Post. They're, they're making the road as they drive on it.
I just learned something new in this past Chiefs meeting that all full-time academy certified officers have to be recertified every three years. I just learned this the other day. So technically I've been a cop for 20 years. I have to get recertified.
But they probably haven't yet defined.
And I have to get recertified by June 30th.
Of this year.
Of this year, because I'm an H.
Have they defined what recertification means yet? I'm not asking you to quote it. I'm just asking if it exists.
I don't know.
Okay, that's what I was afraid of. Not you, the, the process.
I banged my head off the door a couple more times. I don't know.
I don't know.
I don't know. I don't.
No, no, it's. That is what we're all facing right now, I'm sure, but. It's a slight tangent now, but, but you mentioned it, the waivers we applied for earlier this year were approved?
Yes, sir.
So do we have a situation where? Where we, we, we have a situation where we have a full-time officer today who's on waiver, who will still be a full-time officer in a week when we lose another? Does that mean that we cannot bridge them necessarily instead of full-time academy as originally planned? They're already in Bridge?
Potentially. I just want to read this, just.
Am I, well, should I not continue down that thread in this meeting?
I think we can do further research for you and get back to you, but my understanding is that individual is, is already working on their, their training requirements. We can get you more detail.
Let's, let's.
I'll get you more details, yeah.
Yeah, but let's come back to that another time. I, I don't want to go further about a specific individual without them there potentially or et cetera. So let's, let's put that on the shelf.
That's fair.
Get some information back and, but you understand my concern. If we're adding one waiver and that's an assumption that they have to go full-time, then where does that put us in?
And I already have an answer for that. I, I was going to talk to you guys about that at some point. I, yeah, I, I already thought that process through.
Good, okay.
At 2:00 in the morning.
Because this doesn't keep you up at night, I know.
No, yeah, no, I know, I know exactly what you're talking about and I do have a, a recommendation there.
Okay. Well, let's talk and then maybe we'll bring it back to the board at a future meeting on that topic.
Do we have time? Do we have time to talk about it at a future point?
It should be done soon.
Okay.
It doesn't need to be done before next Monday.
Right.
No.
Okay. Thank you. You asked about the certifying versus full-time appointment, part-time appointment, et cetera. Anything else in terms of the staffing plans and kind of our initial thoughts? I'm sure we'll continue to talk about this over the next few months, years, but at least for now, it's. for now, it's, hopefully gives you some guidance and direction and support and we're good with.
And I think it's just good just talking about it, we all know, we all are on the same page and, and we all, so it's good.
I'm good.
Yep.
So I'll go back to the first half of that agenda item, which is the review of the patrol officer search process and the appointment recommendation, now that we've kind of discussed the staffing plan that the recommendation supports, right?
Yep.
And I'll just paraphrase it here, I believe Brian and Chief put together this memo regarding the patrol officer screening committee and you both had copies of this and Bill, I believe you were part of it.
I was part of it.
You were present. So we had nine applications, four were selected for interview, one withdrew prior to the interview process, three were interviewed, or were scheduled for interview, then one withdrew before the interview, so that left two. After the screening committee interviewed the candidates and discussed them, they are presenting both as finalists, and so the candidates presented to us are Joshua Barber and Brian Tennyson.
Correct, sir.
The screening committee, you know, further than putting too forward, if asked, would recommend Joshua for consideration for a part-time appointment for up to 38 hours a week and Brian for an appointment up to 19 and a half.
Correct.
So moved.
There's a lot more they have to.
I was gonna say, there's a little more language I gotta, we gotta put into that.
There's a lot more language in that one. Yes.
Any, any questions or other thoughts or concerns about the screening committee's recommendations?
No, I reviewed the paperwork, reviewed the recommendation, the process, I have no concerns with making the appointment for both candidates.
Given how long things are taking, should we give it at least a month in terms of the appointment date or, you know, or sooner? We can always put the or sooner.
Yeah, I like how we did that the last couple of times, we did by this date or sooner.
Okay.
Yeah.
You're thinking end of April, 22nd, end of the week? I mean, four weeks would be.
Yeah.
The 18th.
I mean, if we're saying or sooner, I'm almost thinking May 2nd, it's Monday, it's just clean and it's, gives you a little longer, I mean, if things are taking that long, you may not know till the week before.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, was May 2nd or sooner.
Yeah, okay. I know, Brian, your notes in here refer to, you know, all the things that are required. Do we need any qualification on bridge? I mean, you have next available full-time MPTC, or is it the appropriate bridge?
I would say it's just the next available. I mean, but they can't go to the next available, depending on their name.
But it wouldn't be available. Okay, so you, so you think that's fine? That was my question.
By definition, their name makes it when it's available.
It's only available then, yeah, okay, gotcha, gotcha, okay. Okay.
Based on your conversation to the other three of you, okay, making the appointment with the either-or scenario? If an officer chooses to do the, the full academy, though they could be eligible for the bridge, I don't think you would tell them no.
Well, I think that's gonna be at the discretion of the chief.
Agreed.
Depending on what we can accommodate at the time, whether we can accommodate a full-time or they.
From either one of those, will meet your.
Today.
Yeah.
Okay. Right, cause that's, that's further employment, full-time employment. Well, we've just got some ideas on how we get there, we'll cross that bridge when we actually have them at that stage where that's, they're eligible.
Right.
So that's a ways down the road. We need a pay rate, is it starting step one?
Yeah. Grade P2, step one.
P2, step one. When do you like to make that motion?
Sure. Do you, do you have a preference if I make them simultaneously or, or do you want them separate? I can do it either way.
I think you'd want them separate, cause one's benefited, one's not, so you probably want to do.
That's fine.
And one's, just so I'm clear, my understanding is, the one is for 38 hours, it's not up to, it's 38, right? And the other one is part-time up to 19 and a half?
Correct, sir.
So one is at 38 hours?
Right.
Part-time? Cause it'd be fixed schedule, assuming at least fixed schedule 38, right?
Correct, sir. It will be a fixed schedule.
Okay.
All right.
And benefit again.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we appoint Joshua Barber to the position of patrolman, grade P2, step 1, for 38 hours per week, benefited in accordance with MGL Chapter 41, Section 133, term of one year, pending all pre-employment, core, driving history check, health exam and drug screen and psychological examination, and we're not gonna, yeah, and we'll say, and further continued employment beyond the year should be contingent upon successful completion of the next available full-time MPTC Academy or Bridge Academy. Did I capture everything you need? Have you added in the grade?
Can I make an amendment that we, we don't have the beyond one year, it's, it's just further employment?
Just further employment, thank you.
Because they may have to bridge before that year to, to continue, so.
Okay.
When?
Effective May 2nd or sooner.
Is that everything you needed?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Thank you, gentlemen.
It's a mouthful, we'll do it one more time. Make a motion, yeah, make a motion to appoint Brian Tennyson to patrolman, part-time appointment for up to 19.5 hours per week, non-benefited, for a term of one year, pending pre-employment, core, driving history check, health examination and drug screen and psychological exam. Continued employment should be contingent upon successful completion of the next available full-time Massachusetts Police Training Committee Academy or Bridge Academy, effective May 2nd or sooner, if everything's completed, at grade P2, step 1.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
That was a mouthful, I get it.
It is a mouthful.
Are we doing anything with the?
Ah, and so, yes, I think I know where you're going. So we have the letter of resignation of full-time status from Officer Waldron, and your recommendation would be to.
Keep him part-time.
Continue his employment at a part-time, less than 19 and a half.
At a part-time, 19.
Status?
Correct, sir.
I don't even know, that motion doesn't need all that stuff.
No, it doesn't say that he's already.
He's already, so it's just a matter of, are we?
What do you, what do you need, just a?
Page 18 in your packet.
You have the language.
It's not fully in there, but starting on the fourth line.
Page 18.
Yep. Yeah, I don't.
It's the last sentence.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Right?
Chief Holst, I would like to make the recommendation to appoint.
So basically, you need an appointment for the day following his last day as a full-time officer?
Like those, so March 28th.
28th, right?
Yep.
Okay. Cause his full-time appointment ends there.
On, on March 27th.
So this would be an appointment at part-time for the following day?
Correct.
Okay, gotcha.
So I'll make a motion to appoint Officer Waldron as a part-time patrol officer up to 19.5 hours per week, non-benefited, with contingent, continued employment contingent on successfully completing the next available full-time MSPTC Academy or Bridge Academy with an appointment date of March 28th, 2022.
Continuing at his current rate?
Yeah, I was gonna say, continuing at current pay rate.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Thank you very much, gentlemen.
You're welcome.
Sorry we're here.
As Bill said, this is, a lot of this is on your shoulders and we appreciate your So that's staffing for tonight. Your grant application. So next topic on the agenda, I'll find my agenda again, here we go. Review and approval of the Mass DMH jail arrest diversion co-res應grant application. So you are ready to submit this?
I am, sir.
Almost.
Yes.
There's some typos and I know, I heard you talking with Bill earlier, I was going through, there's a few on there, we don't have to spend the evening going through them. I see that you have it dated for the 31st is a, or any time here in the next couple of, in the next week or so, so.
And I can change that, I would just like to get it submitted.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, if, if you're on tomorrow, I can swing over.
I would appreciate that.
And just, we'll go through.
Yes.
Content-wise, I have no concerns with it, there was just a couple of typos, maybe some language changes, minor things.
Yep.
But we don't have to spend the evening here going over those.
Sure.
It wouldn't change any content.
No, I would appreciate that, more eyes on it is, is better, so.
That's, that's all I had on that, so.
I agree.
I'm in favor of it, I'd like, I'm looking forward to, you know, for it to be signed and, and submitted, like I said, just a couple of small edits on typographical things.
Yeah, and just an update for you, for you gentlemen, CSO, they've been great, CSO out of Greenfield and who I've been working with, they already have a clinician that they're hiring, putting on their staff in April, and they, that, that clinician is, I don't want to say too much about that particular clinician, but that clinician has already been selected for this position, has met all the, the chiefs that are gonna be involved in this, and that all are very excited to have this clinician, and CSO has indicated that they would like to get this clinician training with us as soon as May, and CSO is willing to take on the, the responsibility between May and June 30th until when this grant would be accepted in July 1st, so.
Excellent.
This looks like it might, might be ready to go here, you know, end of May, April. The clinician's gonna do some initial training with CSO and then do some training with agencies that already have the program up and running and then transfer to us, so.
When do we expect to hear on this grant application? Do they have a timeline?
Yeah, I don't think anything is guaranteed, but from what it sounds like, it shouldn't be an issue. If there's any issues with what we submit, they will call me and say, can you clarify this? We'll, as soon as we clarify it. But CSO also understands that this hasn't been approved yet too, so that, so they understand that too.
The sample agreements that are in here, they don't have the draft watermark on it, but those are drafts, those are, obviously you haven't signed on the agreement with anybody yet.
Sure, 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 no, I meant, do we hear back from Mass DMH on the grant application before July 1, or do we have an ETA and when we would hear?
Right, the turnaround time from submitting the grant to getting approval.
Or, or.
So that we can move on implementation.
Yeah, you guys asked me to check on that, didn't you? Yeah.
Just wanted to know.
I don't remember.
If they had an anticipated turnaround time of a couple of weeks or a month or, you know.
We can double-check with, with DMH, I think Chief's been having a lot of really good, productive conversations with them, they seem pretty eager on his application, so.
Yeah.
All signs point to you're going to get a quick response one way or the other, but it's the state, so.
Well, of course, but I'm also asking, you're used to cycles where there's a very fixed time where they approve, review and approve? This may be a rolling, that they're just as they see them, okay.
It's open and it's, that doesn't even have a deadline.
So then more than likely, it'll be pretty quick.
Pretty quick.
Turnaround, okay.
If they're, if they're pretty responsive to your calls and emails now, then.
And I don't think they're getting bombarded with these, these grants at this point.
Okay.
This, this is, this is taking off like wildfire though.
Yeah.
I know that there's a lot.
Get ahead of it.
Lot of, even out in, I don't want to say the communities, but I have personally spoken with two other chiefs in Franklin County that are interested in this process, so. It, it's gonna take off, it's.
And so the grant allows for additional, not just a CSO clinician, but additional staff, correct?
It, it, it gives us the ability to use the staff that we have, not.
When I say additional staff, it's, it's dedicating some payroll to make sure that they have dedicated staff to assist on calls and follow-ups and.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
So we're not having to.
And that's shared with all of our, our.
Right, that, that was, the first three worksheets, you know, we're saying, there's an allotment of, of funds that, out of that grant to pay those salaries.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
And we'll finalize an agreement for the, the member towns.
Right.
To agree on what that process looks like.
Once that comes, yeah.
Okay.
But that doesn't need to be finalized for the grant process.
Correct.
Just implementation before July 1.
Correct.
So we'll have drafts for the three of you to consider, so we can get them out to the other towns.
Got it.
I have a question about the fringe benefits for this individual, it says 23% at $15,789. Is that adequate? Because I was talking to someone and they said that UMass's, it's, our fringe benefit is 41%.
Yeah, that's, that's not our budget.
That's CSO.
That's CSO, correct.
That's what they are.
They are a CSO employee.
Okay.
So CSO has presented their budget and their request for what their position will, will require. I then am just submitting that to DMH, I, I don't control that, so.
Right, cause they're not, they're not an Irving employee, they're a CSO employee, so that's, this is just the grant funds to pay them.
Correct, and that's why we have two worksheets, is one reflects theirs and one reflects ours.
Okay.
I, I am expecting DMH maybe to come back and say, no, those need to be combined into one worksheet, which, then I'll, I'll figure that out, but.
Yeah.
But yeah, no, to your, to your question, Bill, I, that's what.
Okay, thank you.
I had no concerns. Again, as you said, there's some non-content stuff.
Non-content driven stuff, yeah, minor, just to clean it up before we turn it in.
Yep, please.
And I believe this just requires the chair's signature, is that correct?
That's what it looked like, chair and chief.
When the three of you are ready, we just need a, a vote to authorize the application and to authorize Chief and the Chairman as signatories on the grant.
All right, so are you all set if we make a motion pending the edits or just, you know, knowing that there's gonna be some changes with grammar and spelling and minor stuff?
Yeah, I am.
Okay.
I have no concern, I would just say inclusive of, you know, any, any non-content edits.
Make a motion that we approve the grant application.
Page 28?
Yeah, I'm on it now, I just wanted to make sure I had the right language, for the Department of Mental Health jail arrest diversion grant program. Do you need, you want a dollar amount on that? Cause it doesn't have one.
That dollar amount could change, just so we're aware.
Right, okay.
That's just what we're asking for.